I'm Tim Scoggins, Chair of the Shastbury Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, February 15, 2021. First, I need to check with the board and see, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No. All right. Minutes, we circulated minutes for our meeting on February 1. Is there a motion to approve?
I moved.
Moved by Tony?
Second.
Second by Art. Any additions, corrections, comments on the minutes? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? So the minutes for February 1 that were circulated are approved 5:00. Next up is warrants. First, I have payroll warrant number 16. The amount is $29,258.97.
I'm moved.
Motion to approve from Tony.
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion on the payroll? All in favor of approving payroll warrant 16, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Payroll warrant 16, $29,258.97 is approved 5:00. And I have check warrant 26. The total amount is $51,462.27.
I'm moved.
Motion approved from Tony.
Second.
Second by Art. Major items on this include Appalachian Salt, $2,24500, Blue Cross Blue Shield, $7,300, Bennington County Sheriff, $1,800, Few charges to Bennington Tire, the largest is 320, GA Boat Fuels, $1,100, and $1,500, several for Green Mountain Power, ranging from $24 to $500. Nemrick, $1,200, also $600. Phyllis Poreo, $8,700. I'm guessing that's a tax refund?
Correct. It was a double payment on her taxes.
Right. Tam, $7,600. William E. Daley, $6,900. Those are the major items. Any other discussion on check warrant 26? All in favor of approving check warrant 26, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? So check warrant 26, $51,462.27 is approved 5:00. Okay, do we have any announcements? I will remind everyone that there are expiring terms on the Planning Commission and the DRB. Also want to let people know that town meeting is going to be different this year. We will not be having in-person town meeting. The questions that are normally decided at town meeting, principally the budget, will be decided by Australian ballot on Tuesday afterward, along with officer elections. And there will be an informational meeting in lieu of town meeting that will be held via teleconference on Sunday, the 28th of February at 3:00 PM. And item 6, public comments. All right, hearing none, we'll move on to the Treasurer's Treasurer's Report and Melanie Dexter.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Did you get my reports, Tim?
I did, and I meant to pull them up ahead of time, but I'll do that right now.
That's okay. Let's take a look at the cash flow first. I didn't bring home a hard copy, so I don't have it in front of me, but, okay, there we go. Let's see. The third item down is property tax, you see? Which is very strange, still be getting property tax in February, but we did send out a few bills in January that very, very late changes to to the property tax bills. So that's one. There's going to be one more. And then I think we can finally close the tax year out. The other big thing you see there is down towards the bottom, transfer money due to the, due and from the general fund. That's just to close out the due-to-do forms. I had, you guys have been signing a lot of checks that are actually reserve account, reserve fund payments. So those got corrected. And so now the money you see down at the bottom line is, in fact, the general fund money as of today. No more due-to-do forms hanging out there. So let's see. So you see the checks written in February there. So if you go down to the cash balance, that's our real cash balance as of today, and that's the money that'll get us through to the end of June, looking in good shape. When you, when we look at the reserve fund, you'll see the other side of what I'm talking about, that a lot of those reserve funds have dropped back down again to their real levels because of the the money that was due back to the general fund. Is it clear when I say that, what that means? I rushed through it, and I would just want to make sure everybody knows that it's just that when we write checks, we always write checks out of the general fund. And if it's actually for a transaction that involved one of the reserve accounts, that money has to go back to the general fund. That is, that's clear, right? So if you want to, if you want to pull up the reserve fund, you'll see where all that money came from. And they have, so their cash levels are realistic now. I don't want to do it from memory because a lot of it was water money. Okay, so if you see in the debits column there, that's what I'm talking about. All of that is the money that had to be returned to the general fund. So $86,000 was just water. That's our big payment that we made to North Bennington a couple of weeks ago. That Class 3, 3 Road money, I don't remember specifically what that was, Dave, but there was a big, big old check that we wrote fairly recently, that I think maybe last month.
The culvert for the hollow, but we have $131,000 check coming from the state as the grant for that. So
Right, yeah.
And of course, then that's going right back into the hollow anyway, so.
Right. So it's just a timing issue, but that's why that money had to go back to the general fund. The other ones are fairly small. So if they're, so you can see that there's very little money coming into the reserve accounts right now, just a tiny bit of water. That garage credit there, you see the $15,000. That's actually a leftover from last year. We had put the, the interest, we paid the interest out of the out of the reserve account, and it should actually have come from the general fund. So that's just a correction that I believe the auditors caught. So that's just another, it was due, it was a backwards due to, it was due from the general fund to the garage. And so that's corrected now. Because we actually have it in the budget to pay the, to do the debt service out of the general fund for the garage. So you see the ending balances there are, they're more real. I don't think, there's not much else going on right now, and we're still in good shape with the budget. Everything's looking good. Delinquent taxes are still looking good. And I don't think I have anything else to talk about particularly, unless you have any questions?
The check to North Bennington for water, did that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, don't, yeah, I'm pretty, yeah. I will double check and tell you if I'm wrong, but I'm 99% sure I'm right.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Melanie? All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Yeah.
Good night now.
All right, next up, FEMA assistance to firefighters grant. Dave, you want to set this one up?
Well, I think I'll set it up by tossing it immediately to Paul and Joe. This is a grant that came in under the town because we hold the town SAM number. And Paul did a lot of great work filling out all these really difficult and confusing FEMA forms. But this is a grant that'll allow them to buy the new setup to fill their oxygen tanks. And I'll turn it over to Joe and Paul to give the full explanation for it.
Well, about maybe three weeks ago, Paul, we kind of sat down, we talked about this FEMA grant. And Paul just took off with it. And if you were to read the grant, you know, through and everything, he really did an outstanding job with the narrative, gathering the information. Personally, I'm quite proud of what he did. Quite proud to be able to hand this in and hopefully we'll we'll receive the grant. There is a matching fund on our part, which is 5% of the total grant. So, okay, here, it's in front of you. So, and we do have that within our budget, so it's not something that we have to come up with money to match the total number of the grant. The air system we have now, if you read through the narrative, was bought by former chief Ron Lindsay, you know, many, many years ago. And it's, the company actually isn't in business anymore and hasn't been for a while. They were bought out. So we've been finding hard, finding it hard to get repair parts or even to get it repaired. The person who sold it to us originally is getting up there in age, and I think that you know, eventually he's not going to be around for us to have come down to not only test it once a year like we do, because it has to be certified, but also to repair and to get parts eventually. So if there's any questions, I'm going to open it up to Paul because he's the expert as of right now. And he can answer your questions if you have anything to comment on.
So we're seeking a $38,000 grant, and we're going to put up $2,000. Is that what I understand?
That's correct. It's, yep.
That'd be correct.
Pay for the, the air equipment?
Yes.
When, when is the is the grant awarded? Do you know?
The estimated date would be the end of April, could be as soon as May 1st, once FEMA goes through and takes into the decisions on it.
And do you have a replacement identified?
Our replacement system?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So that's where the money, though.
This could all be taken care of by summer?
I don't know what the lead time is for getting the system and having it installed. Do you, Paul?
I don't have, but we can find out from Reynolds what the lead time would be.
Okay. No, you don't have to track it down. I was just curious.
From if a warrant grant, we'd have a two-year performance period to but we would have no, I would foresee no problem, you know, you know, with the equipment assuming it'd be on hand within six months of a war to try to get that in place.
If, if we don't, if we don't get the grant, should we be thinking about starting a sinking fund to replace it? Because it sounds like it really needs to be replaced sometime. Um, that was kind of my idea, but we also, this grant comes out every year. Okay, in the current system, we just had it repaired. The only thing we would have to buy now, if we didn't get the new system, is the bottles that the tanks that we fill up, that we use to fill our small tanks on our back, they really do need to be replaced. And I may pursue doing that, but that's a very small cost compared to the whole system. So with this, with all the work that Paul has done, we could just transfer that next year and try for this brand again.
Okay.
So I really, it's such a large expense. I would really like to try to, because we're trying to repair, replace air packs too. Yes. Yeah, we've already started. Right. Right. So as I said, with the work that Paul's done, we can just transfer it to next year, update whatever narrative pricing we have, and go for it again. If after a year or two, we don't get it, then we may have to think about replacing it on our own.
Within the grant application, the replacement cascade system that we're requesting was the highest priority on the FEMA grant site as far as how they prioritize grants. So I think we're have a, have a very good opportunity. And that was also the feedback from FEMA point of contact when it showed them our proposed narrative. And they gave some additional pointers on how to strengthen it. So I think we have, we have a good chance at this one. I guess the bottom line. And if we, if for some reason we are not awarded, then that would be pursue, okay, what would I need to do to, you know, improve our argument to be more competitive for it?
Makes sense. Thank you.
How, how big a pickle are we in if that 35-year-old piece of equipment breaks?
Well, for example, it broke down in October, and we just got it fixed a couple of weeks ago because it took us so long to find a new valve that would fit it and that we could install. So yeah, pickle's a good word for it because it, it could break down and we may not be able to fix it or get the parts to fix it.
Can you, can you use Bennington or somebody else to?
Well, that's what we did when we were down for the last three months or so, is we went to bank the firehouse and they filled our tanks for us.
Okay, thank you.
We wouldn't be left stranded, but you know, just not have
Inconvenience.
Right, right. Especially if it's 2 o'clock in the morning. You don't want to have a bunch of empty tanks, you know, on your fire truck. You want to make sure they're full at all times.
Okay, so it sounds like we have a plan B, so we, we hope we get the grant this year. Maybe we can limp along another year.
Yeah.
We're not, we're not going to have to run into a fire without breathing apparatus if if we don't get it, the grant this year.
Absolutely not. No, no, we'll be fine. It's just, you know, this is going to make our life a lot easier.
Yeah, okay. Sounds like a good plan. What do you need from us?
This was just a presentation, let you know what we're up to. Get your consensus that this might be the way to go. If we don't get this year, then we'll try again next year, but informational more than anything.
Okay.
You don't need a vote of the select board to go along with the application? That's, that's up to you. We had a deadline for the application. So the application was sent in last week. Or we can always refuse it if it's voted down by the select board and they, you know. No, that's, no, that's.
No, I think Art is suggesting we go ahead and endorse it. Art, do you want to do that?
I do. Make that a motion.
All right, Art has made a motion that we endorse the fire department's effort to obtain a grant to replace the breathing apparatus filling station.
Okay.
Second by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that motion is agreed to.
Now, would you need a letter to go with that?
This time, I don't think we need anything for the application. Maybe when a ward comes around, we'll find out more information about those.
Okay.
As it goes through.
All right, sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item nine is town moderator and remote informational meeting. Dave, were you wanting me to walk through this, or did you have some specific information that you wanted to provide?
No, I actually don't have a real good explanation yet on the role, the traditional role of the town moderator in an informational session. There is a meeting on Wednesday, a webinar through VLCT with the attorneys and people from the AG's office, who are going to provide some information and some organizational things. Because we're not voting on anything, the whole structure is different. I'm not sure where the town moderator falls in and how we work them into the whole system. I'm hoping to get some answers on Wednesday. When we put this on the agenda, it wasn't, this meeting wasn't scheduled, so this could be quite helpful in getting us some answers in what the roles are here.
Just to add a little more background, the reason this is an issue is our traditional usual moderator, Tom Daley, did not get his petition in in time this last time, so he was not elected in March to be moderator of town meeting. And so we've been trying to figure out what we do now, because the informational meeting that we're planning to have is not in the completely traditional sense of town meeting. So it's not as if we can elect him at that meeting because no, no voting is allowed by teleconference. So we want to make sure we get it right. My, my personal guess is that he will just be the moderator by consensus.
Can, can we, as a select board, can we make him the town moderator at this, at a meeting like this? Can we appoint him?
Dave will find out on Wednesday.
But the trouble is, that'll be too late. We aren't going to have another, another meeting until that meeting.
Well, what I'm hoping the answer is, because we cannot make him a town moderator, because that's an elected position, but we'll be able to, to assign a host or moderator of the informational session. But that's a question. We'll see what we get on Wednesday.
There, there needs to be a moderator of some sort, because this is not a selectman's meeting. Is that, I mean, I just want people to understand this is not a selectman's meeting. We're, we're the guest of probably the town clerk, I think.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting question too. Because it's really, the town meeting is run by the town moderator. If there's not one who was officially elected, then the board might be able to appoint one. But again, that's questions we just have to find, and then it would be very simple to do. Could even be done in a special select board meeting just for that sole purpose.
Okay.
Vague answers right now because of the fact that he didn't get elected. So there's a question of, there's a lot of questions with this. Because nothing's being voted on, there's going to be no discussion, so there's going to be no one need to moderate the discussion. Questions will just come up online and we'll submit, I guess I'm submitting them to the board to be answered during the informational session.
I don't think there would be any harm of us go ahead assigning him the role of host slash moderator. And if that turns out to be the right way to do it, then we won't have to have another meeting.
I agree.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion that Tom Daley be appointed by this select board as moderator slash host. Is that what, is that the way to put it? For, for just the, for the special purpose of the informational meeting on whatever the date is, 28?
28.
28.
28.
Do I have a second?
Tell you.
Second by Tony. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so by a vote of 5:00, Tom Daley is appointed host slash moderator of the informational meeting on February 28.
Dave, what, what time is the, is the, your is your teleconferencing thing on Wednesday?
It's 11:00 AM. I can send anyone a link that's interested. It's VLCT PACSIF, so $28 charge per person, but anyone who wants to partake, anyone on the board, I can register you. You can register yourselves.
Do you, do you think somebody should, from the select board, should be on that?
Well, I think Tim's already on it and I'm on it, so.
Okay, Tim, you're going to be on it?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Okay, if there's nothing else on that.
Did we vote?
We did vote.
Yeah.
Okay, item 10, Hazard Mitigation Plan. I read through it. I am fine with it. If everybody else is fine with it, we, we would be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Second.
Second by Art. Any discussion on final approval of the Hazard Mitigation Plan? All in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, by a vote of 5:00, the Hazard Mitigation Plan is approved.
Okay, we'll begin the next processes of sending it to the surrounding towns and getting it to FEMA for the first round of reviews there.
Okay.
Goes on forever, doesn't it?
Yeah, it'll be months before it actually is resolved, but by having it, should we have an unfortunate event, we get I think it's 70% more FEMA funding, so.
Yeah.
And the Fed's just approved grants for hazardous mitigation, so having it in place might get us grants through that too.
All right, item 11, Transfer Station and Casella. Is this mine, Dave, or did you have something you want to?
Well, I just wanted to keep it up to date that we did get a low boy put over there while they're doing some repairs for a replacement for that terrible recycling thing they had there with the fall down ladder. And then again, just emphasizing that the plan is to put the recycling in the dock with the platform so people can just dump directly into it. There'll be no climbing or anything else. That's a kind of a fair weather project though, so that'll be probably in April or May, we'll get that in and take care of that. That was an unfortunate attempt to rectify the problem, but that just Just didn't pan out at all. That wasn't very good.
Okay, I don't believe I have anything to add. Anything else?
Uh when our contract is up, when?
Our contract is up June thirtieth. Uh I expect to start scheduling. Uh discussions with Casella, hopefully in the beginning of March. Uh as the where we're going. As I think everyone's aware, the TAM facility is closed. Uh the Scale House is closed uh on North Road, so. Uh there's a lot of issues in where we, where our trash is going. It's no longer going to go across the street. So uh it's gonna be a different cost structure all the way around.
Okay, item twelve, DPW report.
Okay, besides the obvious that there's going to be a lot of salt expended in sand over the next day, uh because it's getting kind of icy out there as it is. That, of course, is what they've been spending most of their time with uh lately. Uh just to bring you up to date on a couple of things, the uh. The mower. The board that awards the grant from the state never met in December. Uh as of last week, they're trying to get together to meet maybe later this month. Uh so we've passed the manufacturing time for our mower. Uh we need at least uh eight months to a year order time. So we've contracted to rent the mowers again from Fairfield for the same price as last year. And uh we'll, we'll do the mowing again this year. Even if we get this grant, this grant, this loan, it's very low, low interest loan from the state. Uh and we order it next week. We're not going to have it maybe till November, so. It's, it's just, you know, the lead time in heavy equipment and even light equipment now is just unbelievable, so. Uh we'll just see what happens, but right now, it was funny last week, everybody called. Dave Hosley called. Fairfield, who we rent from, called. The salesman for the uh tractors all started calling. And we decided to be like, well, unfortunately, the board we needed to meet never met, so. We're just kind of uh stuck here, so the option was, there really wasn't any option, so we just rented. Put in the contracts to uh, or we didn't put in the contract, we reserved the machines for when we want. Uh just so that, you know, if we don't do it right away, there's possibly not having one. And that would be the worst possible outcome. And again, as we proposed this uh in the beginning. Um the money that would have gone to pay the loan down will cover the rental. So it's not a loss and we'll just pick it up next year. Uh because it really looks like we'll be lucky to have it by next spring now, so. Yeah, that's just the way it, that turned out.
Hosley still in business? Hosley still would do it, maybe?
Well, no. He doesn't want to sell his tractor either, and he has a nice one. But now we decided to go the route of just renting it. Uh we have a couple of guys who are good at it and.
Yep.
Uh we have the time because of the way we're, we're organized now that that someone can go around, it actually. Allows us to hit things a little bit deeper, and we still have that. Old John Deere still runs. So we can go out and start knocking down problem corners uh earlier than we might have done otherwise. So uh another thing, I'm just going to try and change my screen here for a minute. That's not letting me. That's a shame. Oh, well. The state is now looking at, let me bring you guys all back here. The state is looking at a new program of raising all of uh the state aid. Uh it's going up about twenty one million dollars for this year. And the VLCT has been asked to make a presentation this Friday, and I've uh gotten a few questions for and from them. Uh they're wondering if uh the ceiling uh, the caps on loans are too low. And I do agree they're too low, like the hundred and seventy five thousand for the half million dollar culvert up in the hollow. Is uh tho- those prices just aren't realistic anymore. Even for paving, one seventy five is not a big distance. Another question they had was about um. If the match is good, we pay ten percent on structures and twenty percent on paving. I think actually that is a good because it it makes the field a little leveller. Uh town with a lot more money could just start, uh if they had a smaller match, could get in a lot more. They also run a cycle of three years where grants, although we get them more frequently. Uh that's something that could be monitored, but I wanna, wanna see messed with too much. The big question is, they asked, what could we do if we didn't have to have any match this year? And so I have a little list of what we could do. We could do a lot of paving if we didn't have to ever have a match. This all has to do with some government um grants left over that are are good for highway projects and uh. We'll see where it goes, but apparently there could be a lot of money on the table. Yeah, at least for us, it would be a lot of money because we could, projects that we were going to put on hold, we may be able to actually do. Uh without a match. If they go ahead with the no match idea, that would be uh, that would be terrific. So I'll keep you advised on that. Uh we had a couple of usual ma- mishaps with the mailboxes, uh. You know, the sidewalk clipped a couple. We've already bought them, but we're waiting to talk to the property owner because we want to see if we can shift them over a little bit. Because sometimes the articulated thing we use on the sidewalks. You know, the back will not be in the same direction the front is, and. If he scraped something like he did this time, he's never going to know he scraped it. You're not going to feel it in that thing. Um so we're just going to talk to the property owner before we replace him. Otherwise, it's been a fairly uh. Uh good season. We did have the one mishap. We did hit a telephone pole. Um no one was injured and everything's back up and running. Uh but so far, it's just been a lot of small. Weathers, systems that are costing us a lot of money. Every time it snows a little bit, it's sand and salt and, you know, the little budget killer storms. But so far, we're good on sand, we're good on salt, we're still well within budget, overtime's fine. Um this one's going to cost a lot, I think, tonight, but it's all part of it.
Rumor is the new truck may be here.
Well, I hadn't heard that yet. You know, I had that file in my hand this morning and I was looking at it like, this truck is. Like, that's what I mean by heavy equipment. This seems like we ordered this so long ago. Uh and again, uh because I was talking to Mike about it, because I'm not a big. Fan of Viking bodies, uh because they're always delayed, and this is delayed from from Viking. I know Delory would love to have the thing finished so that they could get paid. Um but it's, it's just been delayed up there again.
I talked to, talked to Jeff Delory this morning, and the rumor is that we should see it this week.
Wow. Well, that goes back to Melanie's due to and froams because it'd be a big check we'll have to make up from. But uh, yeah, it'd be good to finally get that. We should have had that in November.
Yep.
That'll be good. Other than that, I think that's it for the uh DPW.
All right, there's nothing else. We'll move on. Uh item thirteen, state property valuation certificate, no appeal, no suits pending. I think this is a. Pretty routine piece of business, right, Dave?
Yes, it is. It's just every year this has to be signed. Again, Tim, you'll just be signing it for the whole board uh as allowed.
Uh it says we certify that on this date, there are no appeals pending. From action of the listers or suits pending to recover taxes paid under protest related, relating to the April one twenty twenty. Grand list of Shasbury, Vermont, and it has been attested uh by the listers. Larry Johnson and um Dean Meyer, so we just have to add our. Certification to it, our signature to it. Is there a motion?
I moved.
Moved by Tony. Seconded by Ken. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so by a vote of five zero zero, we are certifying the. Fact that there are no appeals or lawsuits pending related to our grand list. All right, and another uh, another one, just like that annual certificate of highway mileage.
Yep, and again, there's no changes to this. This is, we do this every year. This is what they base our uh. Our highway funding from, from the state, so the mileage is exactly the same. It hasn't changed from last year. Uh just a motion to have Tim sign this and uh we'll send it in.
All right, I did not print that one out, so I'm not looking at it, but uh I think I remember what it looks like. We do it every year, like Dave said. Is there a motion to um? Recertify. Let me see if I can bring it up here. Yeah, so uh motion to certify that uh. As outlined, that we have eighty six point two seven nine miles, highway miles in the town. Do I have a second? Seconded by Tony. Uh any discussion on highway mileage certification? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, so we are recertifying by vote of five zero zero. The highway mileage specified totaling eighty six point two seven nine miles. Uh item fifteen, we have uh annual liquor licenses for a couple of folks.
Do we have the one from Paul Lynn, uh which is. One we do every year. I think everybody knows what Pauline uses it for. They're liquor and wine there on the back. And we have uh the uh timetables catering.
And I had two pages for timetables. Was that uh intentional?
That's the way it was given to me, yes, and it's, it's actually two separate things here.
One could be for catering, couldn't it? The other one is for out of the house.
Yeah. I'm just checking that now because I.
Yeah, I'm looking here to see what might be different between the two. The amount of the license is different. One is for about eleven hundred and.
Oh. It's the class of licenses. You have to have a first class for, for, for liquor and a third class for uh beer and wine. So if you look at the one for a thousand, it's a third class restaurant bar license to sell spiritus liquors. And the first class is a license to sell malt and vinous beverages. So I had that backwards. The first class is beer and wine. The second class is uh gin and bourbon, so.
That's the. Okay, okay, I got it. All right, so uh we'll start with. Pollens, is there a motion to approve the second class license to sell malt and. Vinous, venus beverages for Pollens.
So move.
By Ken. Seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, that motion is approved. Five zero zero, and there, I'm going to save that because there are three or four places where they look like they want signatures. I'll make sure I get the right one and give it to Dave tomorrow. Um we also have a third class license. Third class restaurant slash bar license to sell spiritus. Liquors, and this is for timetables. Is there a motion?
Are you going to do them both? Can we do them both together?
I'm going to do them one at a time since they're different licenses.
Okay, so move.
Moved by Art. Ken, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, so the third class uh liquor license for timetables is approved, five zero zero. And then we have a uh first class restaurant bar license to sell malt and. Business beverages for timetables. Is there a motion? Moved by Tony, seconded by Art. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? So that first class license is approved, five zero zero. And then uh one of our action items last week was an update on uh. The effort to bring the parcel IDs on the grand list and on the uh. The GIS web portal into synchronization. Dave, what's your update there?
Uh we entered into an agreement with our uh GIS specialist uh. KAI, and they are going to work on it. It'll be about eight hundred hours. It needs to go back to uh. It's a lot of data work. Someone has to just sit down and start redoing these. Uh it's been something that's. On and off the burner for quite some time. I remember. When I was in zoning like eight years ago, when the system started asking uh Jim, who was the assessor at the time. Why the program kept dropping zeros? Because I was having trouble finding things because. Where we would have a dash, it would change it to a dot, and if it was zero five one on ours, it would just come up five one on theirs, so. Uh I have a lot of permutations on this, but I think we'll have it straightened out this time. We're also adding street names. Lacking on a lot of our maps, so we're going to try and get that straightened out, too. Uh it's a fairly reasonable fee for the amount of work, but it's really someone just sitting there. You know, doing a lot of data entry to correct the thing. And someone who knows GIS, which is beyond me, so.
Would you say eight hundred dollars or eight hundred hours?
Eight hundred dollars.
Eight hundred dollars, okay.
It'll make a big difference to researchers and uh, especially if you're not familiar with looking things up. I got used to it. Uh but if you're not familiar with looking things, it'd really be confusing. Because it, it should match. If you get your property card, it's going to have zero five one dash something dash something, and this one comes up five one. Period, something, dash, something, and you just kind of. Get lost. And then without street names on it, if you're not familiar, it gets confusing, too. You begin to wonder where you are. It'll be a good handy project.
Okay, so without objection, then uh. Allow Dave and the listers to proceed with that project.
Well, it's mostly going to be Shelley. Want to give credit where credit's due. Shelley is much better on GIS than I am, so she'll be coordinating with them.
Okay, very good. All right, that takes us to other business.
I have one small matter. There's a zoning application. Uh for the garage on the corner. It's not for the garage. It's from the Boy Scouts of America. Who want to build a small eight by four shed that they want to use for uh recycling collection. Uh they're asking if uh the twenty five dollar fee can be waived. For the Boy Scout troop. Uh I've run this by Chris, the head of planning commission, and he doesn't see a problem with. That being waived. Uh it will still have to go through the normal approval. Chris thinks it needs to, a few questions about keeping it clean and the area clean and everything. So he's in favor of waiving the fee, but it has to probably go. Just for brief appearance before the DRB, like who's going to be responsible? To not let this turn into, you know. And, well, you know what they can turn into. It can look, look messy. It would be if you're looking at the garage itself, they plan to put it. Just to the left, about five feet in from the sidewalk. Uh frankly, if it was a bin, like you see from most other collectors, whether it's clothing or other. Or other, they could pretty much just put it there without asking, but they're building this shed, so it turns into a different project. But the fees are not statutory by the state. They're set by the select board. Uh, we don't normally waive any fees, but. This isn't like an addition. It's really a collection bin. I mean, it'll look like a regular shed with a door and everything, but it's really just collecting recyclables. Uh, Chris thought because the collection recyclables are in the town plan. As something the town endorses that uh, if there's a group that wants to do it. We should try and accommodate what they want to do.
So I'm talking about what is it they want to collect?
Recyclables, cans and bottles.
Are they going to present to the to the board, to the uh, planning board?
Yeah, uh, I held up their application for for this and to talk with Chris or to have Shelley talk with Chris. Uh, Chris thinks Shelley should basically deny it so that it has to go to development review board, just so that there's some. Way we can control it not turning into a pile of stuff on the corner.
Yeah, I think somebody, I think somebody from the troop ought to go to the board and present. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, this this part of it is just asking because this board is the only one who can talk about.
Sure. Yeah.
It's twenty five dollars. It's it's completely up to the board. Like I said, for other. Uh, things that have come in from other like groups. They're usually like putting an addition on or something like that, and we don't waive them for that, but this is more a. Like I said, Chris feels it's something that's in the town plan that we're encouraging. We can encourage it.
I'm uh, I'm a little, um, still a little vague on what's going to happen here. I mean, we collect bottles and cans in our giant um. Recycle container. So what? Is something different going to go into this um, shed that the Boy Scouts are going to build?
Five cents. They collect the five cents.
Yeah, they collect the money basically. If they have the bottle, they get the five cents. People throw that stuff in our container, they get nothing. But the Boy Scouts would get five cents on on each thing put in there. So it's it's basically a fundraiser.
So it's returnables.
Returnables, yeah.
That's recyclables. It's returnables.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they don't want people's, yeah, they, yeah, returnable. Sorry, Tony. Thank you for clearing that up.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's my, from from where you don't return anything.
Yeah, right. Yeah. Okay, that makes more sense. Yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, yeah, that makes sense. So they're going to build a shed. Uh. Tell me again where.
If you're looking at the garage, the corner garage, you know, at seven A in Buck Hill, Scott's. Uh, it'll be just the left of the building, about five feet in from the sidewalk. It's a little eight by four structure. Be relatively unobtrusive. It'll just have a sign that says uh, Boy Scout Troop. I think it's three, three, four. My apologies. That's not correct. Yeah, three, three, four. And a a collection center.
Seven A and Buck Hill?
Yeah, Scott's Garage on the corner.
Oh.
Well, I think church street, yeah.
I thought I was trying to picture this at our garage all this time.
No, oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, it's Prayden's Garage for someone soul guys.
Oh.
So I I would like to see a design of the the collection bin and. Also to get maybe something from the scout uh, master or someone to have some accountability for if it does become. You know, a mess or it gets out of control.
Well, that's that's um, we have we have two parts of this. Our, the focus here is solely on whether or not. We'll collect the twenty five dollars for the application. The decision on all, everything you're saying, Joe, is why they wanted to go to the DRB so that. They can sit down with the DRB and the DRB can put those kind of restrictions on it. You have to keep it clean. You have to do this, or we yank the permit and.
Right.
Yeah, that's everybody's concern. It's good.
DRB, the DRB has teeth in it.
Yes.
The DRB can put teeth to it. We can't.
Yeah, the the DRB is a quasi judicial board, so if they put in qualifications or they're not followed, it can be shut down. So the only question here is, do we waive the application fee for them?
I make that motion.
So yeah. Uh, Art had moved that we waive the application fee for the Boy Scouts um. Returnables project shed uh. At Scott's Garage at Buck Hill and seven A, seconded by Ken. Uh, my only thought is if we ever uh. Waived. Application fees before, are we sure that's uh, something that we should get into?
Well, that was my fear too, and no, we have not.
Yeah, well, how about this? How about we vote this down and I'll donate the uh, the twenty five dollar application fee and then we don't have to worry about uh.
Talking in precedence.
Yeah, that was my concern. I went back through Shelley. Uh, to through churches, through the Grange, through. Everything we could think of, and we found very few permits, but none seemed to have been waived.
Yeah, that's, I suggest we not do that. I'm I'm happy to uh, pay the Boy Scouts twenty five dollar application fee. So if there's no other discussion, I I I recommend that we uh, vote this motion down.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the, a favor of the motion, say aye. All opposed, say no.
No.
No. Any abstaining? Okay, so the motion to waive the fee from uh, for the Boy Scouts is not agreed to. Uh, let the minutes show that.
No.
That Tim Scoggins has agreed to uh, pay the fee, just so they don't think. Somebody doesn't read the minutes and think we're a bunch of old grunts.
Right, that was all I had.
Okay, does anyone have, anyone else have other business?
I I just want to take a minute to um. Say that this is the last uh. Uh, selectman's meeting before we have town meeting, which is. When you Bob, uh, Tim dropped a bombshell, honestly, he was not going to run for reelection. Um. I really want to say how much I appreciate what you've done, Tim. Uh, it's, you have brought the uh. Level of professionalism, if that's the right word, uh, up a huge amount. Uh. Your ideas are always in the best interest of the town. And so on and so forth. And I really appreciate what you've done. Uh, and. You've taught us a lot and that sort of stuff. And just want to say, you didn't do a bad job for a flatlander.
Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate those kind words.
I gotta agree with Art that when you got, first time I met you, you was on the. The uh, committee for the building of Newtown Garage. And I thought you and I were going to be at war all the time. And I'm glad it worked out the way it did. And I think you've been wonderful.
Thank you.
I'm just amazed. I've been here so such a short time and you fit right in. It's great. Thank you so much, Tim. Yeah, thanks, neighbor.
All right.
My voice to that too, Tim. It's been a real pleasure working with you. You know, you've been curious in the best way, and I really appreciate that. It's it's been great um. Uh, answering to you over the years.
Thank you.
I have to agree with Art Whitman when he said that you've brought a lot of professionalism to the, you know, to the board, and you really did. I mean, you keep everything in order and you. Move things along accordingly and your time management is excellent. You're going to be, you know, very much missed. Absolutely.
Well, uh, thank you and thank all of you guys. And I will say, uh, once again, I said it before, I think, but uh. The thing that I have appreciated about working with this board. Is that everyone is trying to get a job done and uh, a striking thing that I've always appreciated is everybody on this board has been willing to change their mind. And it is a uh, a rare thing in this day and age where uh. Uh, people will uh, allow the facts to sway their opinions. As uh, common as that should be, it's not, uh, it is not, and uh, I have really appreciated that and never felt like uh. Anybody was trying to get attention or grandstand. Uh, anything that came up, everyone was trying to. Get the job done and do the right thing. And uh, any disagreements we had, uh. We knew that they were uh. Uh, both sides were working in the best interest of the town, and uh, we never, we never held grudges, not even me and Ken. Okay, uh, action items. Uh, last week, uh, we promised, I promised I would read the hazard mitigation plan, uh, which I did, and that we would approve it this week, which we did. Dave promised to get us an update on the parcel ID fix for the GIS system, which he did. Uh, today, uh, Dave said he needed to distribute. The hazard mitigation plan. And I promised that I would uh. Pay the fee for the Boy Scouts. DRB application. Was there anything else that we promised?
Give them your address too, Tim.
I'm sorry?
The Boy Scouts. I said, give them your address too.
Yeah.
They like donations.
Oh, okay. And I think it's.
Backing at your door.
The other one would be getting back to the board on uh. Whether we were correct or not, appointing Tom uh, host, host slash moderator.
Okay, I'll assign that one to Dave and Tim because we're going to be on that meeting on Wednesday to uh. Update on the moderator. All right, I believe that's everything. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Tony.
Okay.
Seconded by Ken. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed to adjourning? All right, we stand adjourned. Good night, everybody.